This conference will now be recorded.
All right, let me go ahead and start off by reading the declaration here. So due to the nature of the declaration of a state of emergency due to the novel coronavirus, or COVID-19, pursuant to Code 2.2-3708.2, this meeting is to be held by electronic communications via the web platform GoToMeeting. The catastrophic nature of this declared emergency makes it impractical and unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location, and the purpose of this meeting is to discuss or transact the business statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the public body. And with that, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Stacy, would you mind going ahead and doing the roll call for us?
Sure, from Stafford County, Alex Oziac. Brandon Brown. Brian Council. Jason Towery.
Here.
From Spotsylvania County, Paul Agnello.
Here.
Rodney White.
Here.
Jacob Pastwick. Leon Hughes. From the city of Fredericksburg, Jamie Jackson.
Here.
And Brandon, I do see your message, so Brandon Brown is present. From the city of Fredericksburg, also Basam Amin.
Here.
Mike Craig.
Here.
From the Virginia Department of Transportation, Michelle Shoppshire. Stephen Haynes.
Here.
Jim Ponticello. Dan Grinnell.
Here.
From PRTC, Bob Schneider.
Here.
Joseph Stainsby. From GW Ride Connect, Kate Gibson.
Here.
Lee Anderson.
Here.
From VRE, Christine Hoffner.
Here.
From FHWA, Richard Duran.
Here.
From DRPT, Sierra Williams. Todd Horsley.
Here.
From Fred Transit, Aidan Quirk.
Here.
Craig Reed. From King George County, Nick Miner.
Here.
Kimberly Wilson.
Here.
From Caroline County, Mike Fincham. And Craig Pennington.
Here.
That concludes roll call, and we do have a quorum.
Can we just confirm that Susan Gardner is online? I'm not sure if I heard her name, and I just want to be sure that she is available.
I'm here, Ian.
Thanks, Susan.
All right, well with that, we'll move on to item number three, which is approval of today's agenda. Does anyone have any last-minute additions or changes to the agenda?
Yeah, Alex, this is Paul from Spotsylvania. I have a request that item 5B be moved to the front before 5A.
Okay. Does anyone else have any changes or edits?
This is, this is Jason. Paul, can I ask why you'd like to move the item?
Well, I'll say that I don't know everything about the item, but it seems like it has new funding that could kind of impact 5A.
Can you clarify?
I'll be able to say more after kind of the staff present the item.
All right, well, Paul, I guess I suppose you're making a motion then to edit the agenda. Is there a second to that motion? All right, well, hearing none, I guess the motion fails, and we'll kind of keep the agenda as is. I guess with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion then to approve the agenda as is. Do you want to have a second for that?
Second.
Is there any other further discussion? All right, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as written, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we'll move on with the agenda as is. Move on to item number four, public comment. Stacy, I believe we have not received any written comments. Is there one from the public online who'd like to make any comments at this time? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and move on to discussion items, starting with item 5A, which is the FY2227 CMAC and STBG funding.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I should alert the TAC that we've received in the kind of 10 or 15 minutes before the meeting, two emails, one from Mr. Paul Agnello and one from the chairman of the TAC. And both of those emails indicate that we should not effectively proceed with our option A plan today. Mr. Chair, I suggest that we should probably hear in the TAC those two comments before we proceed with the entire presentation, because if the TAC decides to go ahead with that proposal, we would really waste our time going through all the various presentations this morning and updating the TAC on information that we've received from Susan Gardner at VDOT regarding funding allocations, because that discussion would all be mute. So I'm suggesting that we hear those comments upfront from the two gentlemen and make a decision as to whether we should even proceed, because otherwise I would hate to go through all these presentations and waste everybody's time if we're not going to need these presentations because a decision is taken to not approve the option A proposal. So I'm suggesting that we hear those comments at this point, and then if necessary, we've got all these presentations ready and we can run through them.
All right, Ian, I think that sounds like a good idea. I guess really, you know, I'd like to hear from Paul, since he kind of sent out that email to the group right before the meeting and indicated, I guess, Spotsylvania still has some concerns, I guess, over the scoring and possible allocations. So I guess, Paul, if you want to kind of lead the discussion.
Yeah, I can just kind of go down through the comments that we had. I don't know if you want to show them on the screen or not, but the first comment was with the CMAC STBG spreadsheet matrix is difficult to read, given the small font size. We suggest removing projects slated for removal to separate lists, so that active projects with FY2227 allocations can more easily be viewed. Any comments on that comment? Okay, I'll continue.
Is that a showstopper? I'm not sure.
Yeah, are you talking about the main allocation, like spreadsheet?
Yes.
I can see it fine.
Okay. The second comment was the TAC should make recommendations to FAMPO and GWRC for projects that would be better suited for 5307 funding opportunities. One example of this would be Transit Capital. I'll say Dr. Schneider did a great job of explaining that at the last FAMPO TAC meeting. Fred Transit Capital Projects, new buses and bus replacements would be a good example of this. The VRE Capital Project for Brook Station would be another example of this. Third example would be the leased parking spaces beyond UPC 87764 above the 105 space cap limit. I'll stop here, any questions on comment two?
Sure, I mean, you went through a lot there, Paul. What, can you give a little more detail what exactly you want the TAC to do to go back to the boards separately and present on the 5307 option?
Yeah, well, I said, I mean, the TAC kind of serves as the, the TAC for GWRC and FAMPO can make a recommendation to those boards. And yes, I mean, with regards to the Transit Capital Projects, the Fred Transit Biscuit Project that is kind of currently being considered, the VRE Capital Project for Brook Station, the remaining amount that basically is still CMAC, and then the leased parking spaces beyond the UPC 87764, which is, which is another new candidate project. I'd say this would be something for GWRC consideration, like the next call for projects. So we understand this is not something that would happen maybe immediately, but we think it would be a good idea, though, still for FAMPO TAC at this point in time, to make this recommendation to FAMPO and GWRC.
So, I'm sorry, I just keep asking another question here. So what would the timeline look like for this? And is there, I mean, you mentioned a few specific projects there. Do you have specific recommendations in mind that you'd like to see the TAC make on those options?
So I'd say the, the timeline for GWRC and 5307, I'm not sure kind of what that is. I guess my understanding is sometime later this year, but basically with regards to the specific recommendations we could make for basically when that does occur, basically the remaining amount of CMAC funding on the Brook Station project, which I think is a little bit over $500,000, something like that. The leased parking spaces based on the Spotsylvania Transit Project beyond the UPC 87764 is a little over $22,000, and that's at an FY27. And then the Fred Transit Capital Projects for the, the new Fred bus, and then basically the trolley bus. And we could request the full cost for those, which would be more than they could receive in CMAC.
Well, what, I guess, Adam or Ian, what year again is the Brook CMAC funding in?
I believe, are you asking where it is currently allocated, or you're asking when, when the construction funds should be available?
What, what year the CMAC is scheduled to be allocated? Sorry, I'm just going back through.
Adam, could you give us the answer? I'll pull up that spreadsheet.
Jason, in our draft allocation scenario, we are proposing that that would be in FY23.
Yeah, I just see him, seeing that here on my end, okay. And then the other funds that you're discussing, Paul, are out in '27?
Yeah, the, the leased parking spaces, that request is, is out in FY27. The Fred bus, I believe that's also out in FY27.
So you'd rather see those funds and the Brook funds in '23 be basically become 5307 funds, is what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Is there a reason why we have to make those decisions today? Can we come back and reconsider? I guess this is a question for Adam and Kate, or Ian, or whoever. Is there a reason why we can't make those decisions at a later time if the boards decide or wish to come back? I'm just, I'm concerned that we're getting very confusing and nuanced and, and so forth there. They're not bad suggestions, Paul.
So Jason, I'm not requesting that basically this happened today. I mean, we're just basically making this comment.
But this is Christine. So there's not any kind of suggestion that there be formal action on this, correct? As far as reallocating additional CMAC money from Brook at this time? Is that correct?
Well, I'd say that this body doesn't have the power to do this. This would be a request at some point, not necessarily today, to make a recommendation to FAMPO and GWRC about this. So it could be at some point in the future, as Jason suggested.
Well, yeah, that's why I'm unclear why it needs to be decided today if it's not affecting the recommendations for CMAC allocations that will be made for the, the next FAMPO board meeting.
So we did not request that it definitely be done today. This was just one of our comments. There are basically another, basically three comments beyond this, which are more significant that impact today.
Okay, well, I guess the one thing I will, comment I will make regarding some consideration of requesting 5307 funding to replace the Brook CMAC at some future point is, is the issue of the match that, you know, VRE, before we could, we would be comfortable submitting an application for 5307 to any, any future call for projects, would want assurances that either GWRC would provide the match, or that Stafford County would provide the match that's required for the 5307 funds.
This is Kate, just to add on to that. I think for that reason, it would be appropriate to hold off on having this discussion until there actually is a call for projects. I anticipate that that process itself will take several months, so I think that would provide plenty of time for the TAC to discuss this at length. I think to Christine's point, the TAC can't really make a recommendation until we know what all of the moving pieces are. So, you know, at this stage, we don't know if there's going to be a match requirement or not, but we would know that before we actually put out the call for projects. So if there is a match requirement, that might change what TAC would be wanting to recommend.
All right, yeah, I kind of agree with the discussion here. I think we'd be best suited to kind of just make a resolution at a future meeting to kind of support those project applications and funding for 5307 when those call for projects take place. I guess, let's go ahead, Paul, you won't mind moving on to some of your other substantial comments that kind of deal with the discussion at hand today?
Yeah, so the, so the third busy comment is with basically project scoring concerns. I'd say that there are four issues that we've kind of referenced here. So the first issue is a land, the land use connectivity metric is objective and has been inconsistently scored for similar projects between and within rounds. I'll say that this metric is a oh or nothing kind of five-point metric, so the possible scores are either zero or five. And just some examples of this, basically with the Exit 126 project for Spotsylvania was submitted last fall in that call for projects, which ended up not going forward for funding, but the projects were scored. Exit 126 received five points for that metric in October of 2020. But I'll say basically, for this round, it received zero points in March of 2021. I'd say another Spotsylvania project for the Route 1 revitalization also received five points in the October scoring last year, but a similar project in the same area for the Northwest Quadrants received zero points in the March 2021 scoring. I'd say, I mean, with the Onville Road project, I received five points in a March, the March 2021 scoring, despite having a very similar planned development to the Exit 126 and Northwest Quadrant projects. Our point is basically that if you have similar projects, they should be getting similar scores, either all zero or all five. If there's a situation where basically one project gets five and another one gets zero, and they're pretty much similar or the same, that's kind of not a fair way to do business. And I had kind of, in the, in the comments that Rodney and I put together, we, we had basically the, the link to the October 2020 scoring results, so basically people could see that. The next issue was using...
So Paul, Paul, as a request for understanding, so these scores have been known about since October 2020, just to be clear?
Yes.
Okay.
They were part of basically the, the FAMPO TAC agenda back in the fall.
Oh, I'm just curious, were these comments all submitted then?
Well, I'd say that, at that point in time, we basically only had the scores basically from the fall, basically. Now we have kind of scores for basically the same or similar projects for March of 2021 to compare against the scores from last October 2020.
Can you be more specific, and, or maybe Adam or Ian, can you comment on, I'm not sure exactly which piece Paul is referencing?
So I can't speak to October, I wasn't particularly around for that time, but I can ask Adam just to explain the particular metric and how we went about scoring it. Adam, if you could just go through that, the least land use metric.
Yeah, Jason, we have to go back and look at the, the scores from last fall. I know the last fall, the, the actual call for projects was never approved. So anything that we would have done sort of behind the scenes to get ready for that process, to save our, our staff some time, would have been draft and not final. We always publish our draft scores before we publish the final scores. We've done that the last year. I'd say that the, the scores are relative to one another within the same project category, so all the scores are relative to what they're competing against in that round of call for projects. So what was done six months ago or a year ago is unique to that timeframe. As far as the metric itself, it is one of the many subjective metrics that has been part of this methodology for the last 10 years, and we have acknowledged the need for an update to the methodology, so it's not a subjective criteria. In addition to that, the scoring, as Paul mentioned, is for that, that score in particular, that metric is a zero or a five. So there's no room for us to say it's a three out of five on a scale, or a four out of five. We're, we're left with either a zero or a five, and I think different people are going to look at the same information and come down on, in, in different places at, at different times. So that's, that's as much as I can say on that.
So I just wanted to add to that, that the call for projects last fall was actually approved by FAMPO. What, what happened was the, the funding did not materialize. So then it basically did not go forward with the allocations.
Paul, can you indicate the, the policy committee meeting where that happened?
So that was a decision which I believe happened in the summer, but I would have to look back on that. But I'd say with regards to the scoring, that, that would not happen if there had not been a call for projects issued from the policy committee.
Adam, I think, is your, your point is that they were, one way or the other, they were approved, but you're saying that even beyond that, the different rounds, just given the nature of the projects and the subjectivity of the scoring and the relativity of the projects to one another may necessarily yield variations?
That would be our stance.
I mean, I say with that metric, though, basically there should not be comparison basically within a round with other projects. It's supposed to be a zero or five score based on that project.
And I think you make a great point, Paul. I think, you know, at least what, what I know we've been talking about, and Stafford's been very vocal about this for the past year, but I think everybody here acknowledges that the scoring methodology has a lot of subjectivity in it, and has a lot of kind of nuances in it that may vary from round to round, and it's, it's hard to pin down. So I think if we're gonna go forward with this round of funding, if that's what has been suggested here under the current methodology, then we're just gonna have to deal with some of that. And I know, you know, Stafford has had some similar concerns, but I, I don't know that, I mean, we want to lose good pursuing perfect if, if, if this is indeed the direction that we're going to go and allocate these latter funds.
The second issue under a project scoring concern, basically using future CMAC and STBG allocations to count towards additional funding committed. On page nine, for intersection projects, the implication of the methodology is this is referencing non-CMAC and STBG funding.
I think for the good of the group, I'm gonna forward this email so that everybody has it and pull it up on the screen here in just a moment.
So Adam, I'm actually going through the, and just to explain this, like the, the first sheet is kind of a summary, and then kind of sheets two through four kind of go into more kind of detail on the five issues listed on the front. And I'm basically, under number three, issue number two or three, I don't believe, page two. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, Paul, I, I think on this item, I mean, the language and methodology is not prescriptive enough to address the, the issue that you're raising. I, I see what you're saying here. The latest approved CMAC STBG outlay by the policy committee from January 25th of this year has leveraged funding on that project, so we consider that as funding that is on the project.
And again, I'm, I'm not going to argue the, this point, this is just a comment from us. I do want to kind of go forward and look at issue three. So this is with regards to the safety scoring for highway projects, and, and the issue is basically the, the scores based on kind of crash rate, the number of crashes, is not consistent with established state data, which is freely available to FAMPO, as summarized below. Basically, just have some examples of this, basically from B-Trans, the data that basically the state collects for that, which is publicly available. But I'll say that safety data is, it's a quantitative metric, it's not subjective. Basically, in, in kind of metrics like the number of crashes don't change basically based on kind of what website you're using, or, you know, what methodology you're using to kind of, you can analyze the crashes at a particular location. And the concern we have is this seems like it could be maybe a bigger issue than just the, the CMAC STBG for this round. It could impact other rounds of this, as well as basically the safety analysis that's going to have to be done for the ORTP. We want to better understand basically the, the way that the safety scores are being determined and calculated, and see some documentation on that. And just to kind of illustrate the, the issue here with some of these examples from B-Trans. So I'd say that the state uses basically PSI intersection and a PSI segment metric to classify how bad basically particular, particular locations are for basically a safety. And in that, like Exit 126 is number eight in the district for the intersection PSI, and it's number five for the segment PSI. Northwest Quadrant is a 25 for the intersection, 51 for the segment. Harrisonville is 52 for the intersection, 55 for the segment. Onville Road is, is not actually even ranked basically in the district for the intersection, and the, the segment is 171. But I said basically, in the FAMPO analysis, Onville was basically the top out of those four projects. But I said basically in the FAMPO analysis, Onville was basically the top out of those four projects. So it seems like something was not done correctly and we want to better better understand that. So this
How we how we scored it. So, you know, first of all, we we acknowledge the need to switch over to some of the state data that's been published recently. That's exactly what's been reflected in the roadway measures for our new LRTP scoring that this body approved recently. So we fully understand why we need to be using PSI intersections and segments and and that sort of thing. So we are using that in in what we're moving out. The data set that we use to score this is exactly what's been used for the last, I'm not sure how many years at FAMPO. It's the crash, the crash modification factor data from FHWA. So we take the inputs, run it through a tool, we have the documentation, we're happy to send that out. That's exactly what we used last year and did not receive any comments to this effect. The methodology, as you know, and I think as as most of this group knows, does not specify what data set has to be used. So we do, of course, want to use the latest and greatest. We we try to do that across the board, but we also kept it consistent with what was done less than 12 months ago. So I would refer folks to the responses that we left to the initial round of comments that we received before the last TAC meeting that's in our packet.
So I guess I I had a just follow up question on that. Basically, I know that when we had a initial conversation with FAMPO staff about this, there was a conversation that the the VDOT pathways to planning data was being used for this. And I know basically on the, I believe we saw basically with the the scoring of the Garrisonville project for safety, it actually mentions that data source. So can you just clarify, like, what was VDOT pathways to planning data used for all the projects to calculate safety scores?
Jordan, can you speak to that?
Yeah, so the data that was used from pathways for planning was the crash data. And then we also used the AADT and other factors that are consistent with the FHWA formula that was used to create the crash rate. All this data was downloaded from pathways for planning. The years are slightly different, Ulis 2015 to 2019. We used the whole slew of years that were available on pathways for planning crash data.
And and the 2013 to 2019, that was just an example. Yeah, I we're we're aware that pathways planning is 2013 to 2020, and that's not really the issue. The the concern we have is just that the is the analysis is not consistent with the state data that basically was developed for B-Trans and basically is publicly available. And I say basically, when you have an interstate project, I mean, it makes common sense that that generally is going to have kind of a higher, I mean, sa- safety kind of indexes for PSI for intersections and segments than basically kind of a intersection of two secondary roads. So, I mean, we're concerned that there could be something that's not correct with the the analysis for this.
Paul, it's not true to say that it's not correct. It's a question of what was done last time. This, we followed the same procedure, as I understand it from Jordan and Adam, as to what was done last time. And last time it was correct. It's not, it's not true to say it's not correct now. It's a question of whether we want to shift to a different data set because newer information is available. Now, that's a, that's a question of of policy, whether we want to use the existing CMAC policy and the data set which was used in the last round again in this round, or whether we want to embrace a new data set which has come out since both the policy was developed and which wasn't used last time. It's not a question of whether or not it's correct, it's a question of whether you want to change data sets.
So I guess I'm just trying to understand why, why would the state data not be used?
Well, I would ask that question to you who did the previous round when you were here. Why did you not use the state data then?
Well, the last round was last fall.
Previous round.
So I I'm not aware of that. I my my understanding was the data that FAMPO always used came from VDOT. It wasn't federal highway or non-VDOT data.
This is this is VDOT data, that's right from the VDOT website.
So I guess, I mean, I mean, how are we getting the two different answers using VDOT data? Like a one answer with B-Trans, another kind of answer with with this way?
Methodology does not speak to us using PSI segments or intersections or V-Trans data.
So I guess I I don't want to go any more down in the weeds of this, but it seems like the data should be consistent. We shouldn't be getting different answers when we're using VDOT data for both.
Okay, we're happy to move on.
So the fourth issue is basically the programming of allocations did not consistently follow. Approved CMAC and STBG prioritization met- the approved CMAC and STBG prioritization methodology, which which incorrectly impacted how the allocations were made. So the the first issue is basically the wrong categories were used instead of the ones specified on page five and six of the methodology. And the explanation for this is basically on the bottom of page five and top page six. It lists six different categories, which you see listed there. There's roadway capacity paving projects, two is ITS and operational improvements, three is intermodal transportation projects, fourth are transit projects, fifth is planning and PE studies, sixth are basically non-motorized projects. So with regards to the projects that were submitted for this round, they all fall basically under number one or number four. So basically for the CMAC and the STBG, there should be basically two lists. There should be one for the transits, another one for the roadway capacity. But but right now, basically, at least in terms of what what has been presented to date, there are four lists. So there should only be two. Just to stop. The next sheet, you can kind of see what the list would be.
The first category, there are two subcategories that have different metrics to score the projects. We believe that the intent of the methodology is to score like projects. So if there's a project that's that gets scored a certain way, we score the other projects that are the same mode, the same type, the same way. So there are, for transit, for example, four subcategories for roadway. There are two subcategories. So we kept it consistent with like-for-like projects that are scored the same ways. You can't compare projects that are in one category to projects that are in a separate category. There are high-level categories, the six that you mentioned, and then there are subcategories.
So maybe it would be helpful to look basically at the actual basically prioritization methodology at the bottom of page five and top of page six. So this is the the very bottom paragraph on page five. And maybe if it can be, please, made a little bit bigger. So it says basically, after the initial screening process has been completed, projects will be placed into one of six categories listed below and scored. Projects in each category will then be compared to one another. FAMPO staff will evaluate all projects according to the criteria for each project category. Staff will then prepare a list of candidate projects that have been scored and ranked in each category. The projects will be listed in descending order from highest to lowest in each category. And then the top of the next page says the six project categories are kind of as you see there on the screen. So it appears to me that basically, and Rodney, that there are six of these categories. And then in terms of just the call for projects, there were two categories, number one and number four, which had projects submitted. So there should be two lists, one for basically CMAC, another for STBG. They're a little different because of project eligibility. But it seems to us there should be two lists and not four. And I'll say, I I think that this is something that could be easily remedied. I I don't think this is the huge deal, this is just something we would like to point out.
Is this the, Paul, is this your last comment? Do you want the prioritization process?
No.
Okay.
Okay, well, I I will continue. I say the the second issue with the programming basically was was the Onville Road project was incorrectly considered an existing project for this round relative to other projects. All the submitted projects were either new to the six-year plan for this fiscal year or are not in the six-year plan, so they are all new projects. Onville Road still has a temporary UPC, which is indicative of a new project and is not active yet as it only has future allocations in the six-year plan for FY26 and FY27. An active existing project has six-year plan previous funding with recent expenditures. So I'll say kind of one of one of the issues basically because of the the issue I just mentioned, and there's some other issues with the scoring, the Onville Road project appears to have received higher allocations due to the scoring. I'd say we're we're not against funding the Onville Road project and we support Stafford's effort with that project, but we even do have some concerns basically just with the way that the process has unfolded with the scoring and the programming with regards to that. A fourth issue is basically with the categories. What is the basis for determining how much funding goes in each category? For instance, if you have roadway projects and transit, how do you determine how much funding goes to one versus the other? And then the and I can stop there if someone wants to comment.
This is Alex, I'd like to comment. I appreciate those comments and I think, you know, we can all agree that, you know, the prioritization process could still use a little bit of improvement there. You know, we didn't do a full system tackle on our most recent go around, just clearly kind of addressing the STBG funds. But I think we've all kind of realized the prioritization process could use some updating. And I think this is what you kind of addressed to here. And I guess my main question for you, Paul, today is, you know, the whole basis of this discussion was kind of centered around this FY27 allocations and trying to move this ahead forward. So based on these comments and concerns you have and Spotsylvania has, are you still willing to move forward and support? You know, the kind of, I guess, option A that FAMPO previously presented, which would allocate FY27 funds? Or are you just not ready to move forward at this time?
Well, I think there's a last question that needs to be discussed. And 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 that question is basically, what is the impact of not approving the allocations in the May timeframe?
We've got VDOT on the line, so perhaps we should direct that comment to VDOT.
So I need to have this everything programmed July, June 1st. And so I need to have some sort of guidance by then. Now, if y'all don't have, if y'all, if we can't, don't have an agreement on how the FY27 is is allocated, I'm fine with putting that in the balance entry. But everything else up to that time, I need, I need to have something settled and in place so I can go ahead and make sure that all the funds are on projects and they're distributed so we don't lose any funding.
Well, I say one one question we have basically is the 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 understanding we had is that kind of the the urgency with doing this was to cover the project deficits. And that could be done with the kind of available CMAC funding on the Brook and Leland projects, as well as maybe with the new HIP funding that's coming about so that even all the deficits in the STBG and CMAC can be potentially I mean, fully addressed kind of now in a May timeframe. And then basically the the issues basically with the the scoring and the the programming of projects, there there would be more time to work that out. And that could be done at a future meeting.
And and let me say something else we could do is is that we could go down and we could prioritize these projects. And any project that we don't feel we we want to put funding on, we just don't put it in the prioritization. So we're, and that would simply be saying, everybody agrees that, I'm just gonna say, projects five, six, and seven, don't even know what that is, that we want to make sure that they're funded correctly within the first so many years. And we we leave it up to the FAMPO staff to go in there and using the the estimate and using the schedule and using the types of funds we now have, that they program the funds based upon a prioritization agreement, meaning these are the projects we want to make sure are fully funded in the plan. And then these other ones, we don't all are not in agreement with funding quite yet. So we just, any FY27 money we put in the balance entry. Just a thought.
This is, this is Jason. You know, I I think at this point, Paul, I I know we're we're really far down in the weeds here and I hear your concerns. I mean, we've all talked about these things. And, you know, at this point, I just don't see where we're gonna be productive continuing to in this format continuing, feels like we're just gonna spin our wheels here about nuanced comments and different things. I you have some great comments, you know, we have some similar comments. But at this point, I think it's probably best just to move forward. We have, we have scores. It seems that there might be some things that you don't disagree with. We kind of have some things we don't agree with. But, you know, at this point, I think FAMPO staff has done their best to apply the methodology correctly. And you know, trying to make it perfect at this point, I think is just gonna be impossible. And I think we'd be better served to focus on getting through this and then coming back and dealing with more of these nuances moving forward. I mean, none of this means that, you know, in six or eight months or a year that we can't come back and the FAMPO order, whoever couldn't take action to readjust things. I just that's, that's my opinion. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and move forward with option A.
Hey, Jason and Alex, before we do that, though, basically, can you just talk a little bit, a little bit about what the Stafford comments were?
No, I I think at this point, to be honest, you know, I again, I hear your concerns, Paul, but I think we're way down in the weeds here. And I I think I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to move forward with option A and continue to move this meeting and this body forward.
So were those the comments that Stafford made this morning?
I don't, I'm not aware of any comments that Stafford made.
This is Alex, I I made a comment to Ian and Adam this morning after seeing the email from Paul and just stating that, you know, based on Paul's comments, I wasn't sure if we were going to be in a position to move forward with the funding as FAMPO has laid out, or if we're gonna actually have to put it on hold and just, you know, move forward without signing FY27 and just putting it in reserve account. Those were my comments this morning.
So let me just ask kind of this, like, what's the urgency or rush in trying to do this today?
And I don't know that there's an urgency or rush, Paul, I just think that we were really far down in the weeds here on this stuff. And I don't know that we're gonna be productive arguing over project specifics. I mean, you're, you're trying to argue different, you know, nuances here that really seem like there's not a lot of clarity on. And I think we just need to go ahead and move this round forward and then we can dive down further into details at that point.
Mr. Chair, this is Bob Schneider, I'll make the motion to move forward.
Hey, Alex, this is, this is Adam, just a a note real quick. And I'll let Ian add to this if he sees fit. But we we did, so we sent our packet out Wednesday. And as you guys know, over the last month, we've gotten lots of new information over time. We appreciate working with Susan at VDOT. There's a lot of things that have been flying at her that she's been getting to us. And one of the things that we got late Wednesday afternoon after we had sent the packet out is the initial decrease in the STBG budgets. Some of that has now been, has now gone up for FY23 to 27. So we do have more funding to work with and we there is a further deficit, only about $7,000 in FY22. only about $7,000 in FY22. So any action that the TAC takes today for the allocations as presented, and I'll pull that up in a second, would need to also reflect the new budgets that we have for STBG and what we're proposing to do with that. Instead of allocating that in proportion with what we've done to date or making new allocations, it's just to push that out to 27 and have that be an additional balance. So that is one thing I did want to point out before motion is made.
All right. Well, thanks for that expeditional insight, Adam. With that, I think we had a motion to go ahead and move forward with adopting, I guess, option A as FAMPO's got presented here and on the screen. Do I have a second for that?
Yeah, I think.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
This is Paul. I just want to say that we are not going to vote in favor of this. We have concerns with, with this vote at this point in time.
Adam, if the TAC moves ahead with this, do we need to adjust that $7,000 odd dollars that has changed?
The, the motion would need to reflect essentially that, that's, that switch and what we propose to do, again, just to illustrate this for everybody. What, what we got late Wednesday afternoon is that FY22 here is going to go down and FY23 to 27 is going to go up. So what we're intending to do is that for project number 29, which has STBG funding in 22 and 23, allocate funding in 23 to cover that $7,000 deficit, just to square away the numbers those two years so that there's no deficit down here in our table at the bottom, and then take the funding in the other years, 23 to 27, and essentially push that out so that this STBG balance entry for 27 is going to be, is going to be higher.
You, sorry, Adam, how much in 27 will be available roughly?
I'd have to pull it up, Jason. It's, it's about, the budgets have gone up by between, I'm going to do this from memory without having the ability to pull it up right now, but between $120 and $140,000 each year, so that times five.
In FY, in the, in 27, it went up 138,550.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, so we have some funding to still come back and play with at some point. Paul, does that help, help ease your nerves at this point?
I'd say I'm glad for the additional funding and I know the HIP funding, basically there was some additional funding there as well. I know there's a request to maybe fund the East-West Mobility Study using some of that funding. It just seems like we're kind of rushing to try to approve this today, and I don't think it's a wise idea. And that's why we're basically voting against it today if this goes forward. It's not that we don't want to basically help the FAMPO process. We do want to basically move forward with trying to allocate the available funding in the near future. We just don't think it's ready today.
We, from a start perspective, would propose that the HIP funding and the new allocations from VDOT, we just put effectively in a holding pen if you want to move forward with this option A. So effectively, we would just fix that $7,000 odd dollars that we need to reflect and put the rest in things like balance entries, et cetera, just to not allocate any of it, which would then give the TAC and the Policy Committee the opportunity to revisit those HIP funds and the new allocations we've got from VDOT, the increases. And we're talking in total for those two amounts. Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's around about 1.2 million, I think. And we're suggesting that we don't allocate that 1.2 million to projects in view of, of all of the discussion that's just happened, that we just effectively park that funding.
I guess my question is, is because we've gotten some of this funding back over the years, we could almost restart back to where we started at before, and the funding would, would stay on a lot of these projects and not be pushed outwards. Because we are, we, we have almost gone back to hold.
Well, we lost 2.7, we lost 2.7 million and we've been through these two programs, returned 1.2 million, so it's not, it's not exactly the same.
Yes, but then you, you gained money out in the FY27.
But I think what she's saying is basically, did you ever see me, 5307 funding on the two projects for Brook and Leland, that was like 2.2 million with that and the other 1.2. Isn't that more than the deficit?
Yes, and so you would almost go back to overhaul.
Yeah. So that brings us back to my question of why rush and try to do this today? It seems like, you know, these, these issues should be kind of looked at and more holistic.
So this is my motion. I'd like to speak to the motion. First of all, the motion is adjusted in these amounts. Secondarily, is each meeting that we have is all, not always, but frequently, a, let's delay. We are consistently, if there's things that need to be addressed at a later level, they can be. But the continuous issue is work to get something done, produce results, and then have disagreement over what the results yield, most frequently surrounding the process itself and why things change, when frequently the process itself is designed to be reflective of changing data and changing information, which then delays it, which seeks to create a new criteria, which then results in potentially new data, which then reveals the same set of concerns or circumstances, but in a new nuance, depending on who is or is not receiving a higher scoring of funding. That's a pattern and practice of which I've observed. And there is a process. The process is consistent. The process has recommendations. It's backed up by data. It's backed up by technical professional staff, and it's a staff recommendation. And I, as a member of the TAC, have heard nothing presented this morning that changes the outcome or the output of what the technical staff did. And, and as such, there is no rush to move forward. It's a continuous marching of the process forward with other, with other opportunities. If further questions or desire to get projects or processes done, this isn't the only chance to do that. So that's why my motion, my motion remains in place to approve and proceed and then move forward. That, that's my motion with the reflected dollar amounts.
Bob, would you accept a friendly amendment on the $7,000 issue that?
Yes. That, that's what I meant. I should have been more clear with the adjusted amounts as shown in the, in the spreadsheet. My apologies.
I think Christine seconded it.
Yeah, Christine, would you mind just confirming, you tell second, that adjusted motion there?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So then we've got a motion and a second to kind of move forward with the, the option A as presented, as well as kind of using the additional RSTP funds or we just received to kind of help backfill and create an additional fund balance, I guess, in FY27 is what it'll do. So if there's no more further discussion, I'll go ahead and take a vote. I think Stacy, I think we'll want to do a roll call vote on this one.
I think Stacy may have just stepped out for a moment. Adam or Jordan, do you have a list of the roll call that you could do the roll call on?
Yes, I can pull up a list.
Thanks, Jordan. If we can just take a roll call as the chairman has requested.
Yes, so I'll start with Stafford County, Mr. Alex Oziac.
Aye.
Mr. Brandon Brown.
Hey, Jordan and Alex, just a point of order real quick for a vote. If it's not unanimous for the TAC, for the bylaws, each jurisdiction or agency gets one vote. So Stafford County's vote would need to be one vote.
Okay.
Okay, so I should just call the jurisdiction or organization and then someone that represents that organization can respond for the organization or county.
Right.
Okay, Stafford County.
Aye.
Spotsylvania County.
Against.
The city of Fredericksburg.
Aye.
King George County.
This is Nick Monner. Aye.
Caroline County.
Aye.
Red Regional Transit.
Aye.
The Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT.
Aye.
The Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation, DRPT.
Aye.
Virginia Railway Express, VRE.
Aye.
Federal Highway Administration, FHWA. I don't know if Richard Don is to respond to that, but I can move on. Potomac-Rappahannock Transportation Commission, PRTC.
Aye.
GW Ride Connect.
Aye.
That's what I have on the list. And the motion would pass with majority, yay.
Okay, thanks, Jordan. Well, I guess having after that vote, I guess, Ian, would you still mind running in through, yeah, item seven or 5B there?
5B being the HIP funding.
Yes, yes, even though I think our vote just went to kind of table that in the fund balance account. I think we still like to have a little discussion about it.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chair. We received this, this past week, and you can see Adam has pulled up the email there. The HIP funding is highway improvement funding. It's not something which occurs regularly. It occurs at odd, in odd years when, and when funding is approved. So it's not something which occurs annually. The item you've seen in your pack with the various criteria that are involved, this funding is something which we will need to allocate, but we don't have, as far as we are aware, a policy that deals with HIP funding particularly. So this can be funded, this can be put to projects in ways which the TAC or the Policy Committee would need to decide because it's not a regular funding stream and it's not something for which we have a detailed policy of how to allocate. So that kind of is a nutshell where we are. The funding amount is, Adam, have you got the exact amount? It's 600 and, they're three line items, which you can see there. 542, 381, 78, 135, and 19, 534 for a state match. Those are the amounts that we will need to allocate. And we had proposed, after a very, very brief discussion with Alex, we'd proposed that the East-West Mobility Study Phase II gets funded with a portion of that funding. You'll remember that we said to everybody last time, I believe we have funding from DRPT through a grant and $40,000 from the 5307 funding, which would deal with the transit portion of the study. And the Phase II, which is roadways, et cetera. We don't have any funding for at this stage. So we would, we would have asked in this meeting, if we'd got to that point, for a portion of that funding to be put to the Phase II of the, of the East-West Mobility Study. And the remaining funding, the suggestion was just that it be based on the ST, STBG projects that were submitted via the, the call for projects. So that was going to be our general proposal if we'd got to that point in the meeting. Next slide.
Ian, that's the final slide.
Okay, so that's just where we got to at this point. Bearing in mind that both this amount of funding and the adjusted CEMAC, RSTP funding arrived this week. So we got the adjusted figures from VDOT during the week, the second one after we'd already sent out the TAC packet. So these amounts are, have recently come to our attention in this week past, sorry, the past week. And I believe as of the resolution that was taken just now, the decision is that we park the allocation of these funds for a later date, but I'm in the hands of the TAC on this particular matter.
Okay, can I bring something up? This is Susan. Just to make sure everybody knows, these funds must be fully obligated by September of 2024. Just to make sure everybody understands that. So I can't have them, I need to have it fully obligated by September of 2024. After that, I'm good.
Thanks, Susan, for that clarification. I think that is in the document that was sent out with the packet, if I'm not mistaken.
This is Paul. I had a question for VDOT. Basically, with this funding, is it kind of maybe like a one-time funding that FAMPO will receive? Or is this something that could appear again?
Remember, we got it before. Remember, we got it before. I, it's, it's a happenstance. It shows up. We get it. We planted on a project and we use it. And then I can't tell you that you're going to get it the next year or the year after that, but then here it is, we get it this year. So I can't, there's no guarantee for this money that you're going to get it every year. And I don't, I can't tell you when you're going to get it. And I don't think the office can tell you. So this is really coming from the CARES Act with all the COVID. Part of the money is coming from that, and then the part of the money is coming from the Appropriations Act. So, and, and it's just, it's happenstance. Every year, you might get it, you might not.
And I guess like with this funding, it has the same kind of eligibility and kind of uses as STBG?
It does, and I, in there, it tells you, but the, there's a little bit of difference on the HIP CRRS A one. There's a few, there's a little bit of difference in that one. But yes, it is the same as RSTP money that we use. So, but there's, only difference is the other one, the, I'm just going to say the CARES Act. That one, you can actually use it for employee salary.
So I guess, could this funding be used to do a FAMPO study, like the East-West Mobility Study that Ian referenced?
Yes, it's the same as RSTP money.
Okay. And I guess this is a question for Ian, but just with regards to the East-West Mobility Study, is there a scope, schedule, or budget for the highway portion of that?
So we have developed a very long scope, which I'm currently working on. It hasn't been published yet. The study itself, remember, is going to consider multiple corridors simultaneously. So it's broader than just a one corridor study, like say, the Lafayette Boulevard Study. We're going to be looking at Route 317. We're going to be looking at a particular route that Paul had pointed out to us, which is a 208, I believe, or have I got it wrong, 208? Was that the one you were getting at Paul? Yeah, so there's, there's, there's about four key corridors, which we're going to study on the basis of the congestion that we currently see and also projected congestion that we've got from the modeling that Cambridge Systematics has been doing, showing that in 2050, the last year of our LRTP update, there's going to be significant congestion on many of these corridors, and we do need to find solutions. So effectively, it's, it's a study which is going to attempt to find alternatives for a number of major east-west corridors linking the I-95 to where people live and work and linking the VRE train stations to where people live and work. the I-95 to where people live and work, and linking the VRE train stations to where people live and work. So it's, it's a major undertaking, it's not specifically focused on one corridor. It's multiple corridors. I don't know if that goes away to answering your particular questions? Or did you? Did you want me to go further?
No, that, that's helpful, like are you trying to get this in the FY22 UPWP before June?
So you'll see that it, it is in the draft UPWP, but we've put to be decided in terms of funding, because we don't currently have the funding for the Phase Two. So we put it in there, in the draft with a holding pen. I'd reached out to VDOT to ask whether they could find a little funding. And they are still busy with processes to see whether there is funding in a particular pot that we're not currently aware of. So we've already put it in the draft, but we've put it in the draft saying funding to be decided, because we don't have the funding and we don't know what date we will be able to find the funding. We do have the funding to, to move forward with Phase One, which is the transit portion of the study, and we can kick that off on the first of July.
So I guess with regards to the highway portion, then would you need to do, do a UPWP amendment? To kind of get the, the funding in a place where it could be used for this study in FY22?
In terms of whether we need to do that, I'd ask Adam to comment on what his view is in terms of doing such an amendment. It, for example, if we were to be allocated funding today, we could take one approach. If we don't get the funding by the time the UPWP is approved, we would then need to do an amendment, yes, to introduce that into the UPWP in terms of the funding amount, because we don't have the dollar amount ready to put in right now.
Yeah, Ian, this is Adam, and just a pause question for a second. So we did, as a result of the last tack meeting, that discussion, we are indicating in the final version of the UPWP that we're going to put forward for the policy committee to approve on the 20th, that we have identified the $40,000 in 5307 funding as allocated by the GWRC Board on April 26th. And that is for the transit route planning part of the overall Phase Two effort. So if there was funding identified today, for instance, if there was a motion to fund Phase Two of the study, the roadway portion with the hip money, we would have time now to put that in the UPWP, so we could avoid having to go through the lengthy process of amending it. If it's not identified today, if we want to take some time to think about this funding and where it can go, and it would not necessarily be part of the approved SIP, that would require a UPWP amendment down the road.
Would the study potentially stretch into FY23?
It would, yes. It, it depends, of course, on the start date, and in terms of consultant work. My guess is that because we're doing roadways and possibly highway changes, we would need modeling done. And as you know, modeling is not done in-house by Stafford, it's done by consultant. So the consultant would need to model the impacts of the options that would be proposed. And that would probably be done in the second half of FY22, we would start, but it would, it would follow over into FY23, because we wouldn't complete it by the end of FY22.
And I guess what's the total budget for the, the transit piece of the study?
We have got the DRPT grant, which is approved at 59,100. There's some complicated calculation that they had to do, which slightly changed the amount that we applied for. And then there are matching funds to round about the same value, which we have to provide via state match by 5303, and a small local portion, I believe. So that's what the grant that was in the six-year improvement program that was tabled at the CTV has got that $59,100 as the grant amount, plus the state match and the local match. And then you know about the 40,000, which is the actual route planning, which is part of the Phase Two.
So I guess would the total for the transit then be roughly around 100,000?
If you, if you're including the 40, are you saying?
Yeah, look at all the funding, the 5307, just the funding you have, basically from DRPT.
Yeah, so the external, now the external funding is from DRPT, 59,100, plus there is a state match. So Adam, I know we had a discussion with them on Friday about the exact dollar amount, because it's slightly different to what we.
Right, Ian, the, the total project budget as listed is $130,000 for Phase One, and then that $40,000 that, in 5307, that's going to help fund Phase Two. In total, between those two numbers is 170,000.
Okay.
That includes all the match, though. So Paul, that includes even the local match portion, which is not coming from outside sources.
Right.
And I guess like is the bike path, like the VCR trail, is that under the transit portion? Or is that under the highway portion?
So bike and pad items, technically in our application, we indicated would be in the highway portion. However, there is some, the opportunity to, to link bike routes into train stations, for example, and major bus transit hubs. So the access to those train stations and transit hubs, if it was by using bike paths, could be included in the Phase One study. If it's totally separate, then we would put it in, in Phase Two. So in other words, bike and pad projects could be spread across both phases, because there's the access element in, in Phase One. How do you access transit? You might ride your bike, for example, to one of the VRE train stations, and then want to park your bike somewhere, if there's a facility to lock the bike or not. And we need to examine how you get your bike to the train station.
So I guess like are, are you asking for some funding, basically for the highway portion today?
Well, if we asked for it today, which we'd intended to do, we could put it in the UPWP final version that goes for a vote. If not, we would then have to do a UPWP amendment. So it would make it easier for us if we could ask for funding for the roadway portion. But if the tax not comfortable with that, I understand, I mean, I don't want to, you know, have a, a problem, but we would like to ask for the funding today, if the tack is comfortable. I know that in view of the fact that we don't have a formal methodology for dealing with hip funding, because it's not a regular funding stream, that you might want to think about that. But I would, yes, Paul, I would request that we do provide funding today.
Ian, we, in the past, when we received hip money, we treated it just like RSTP money.
Okay, thank you for that.
So do you know how much money you need?
So because of its multiple corridors, we're asking for 235 as the total amount to cover 208, Route 3, 17, et cetera. It's a major study of all the east-west roadway movements, and it will involve multiple corridors simultaneously.
I would add too, Ian, that if the, if the tack, we want to take action to that effect and fund Phase Two of the study that way, and FY23 with these funds, that the, the balance, if we don't want to allocate that to STBG projects, we could put that in the regionally significant projects UPC for FY23.
Which would be a parking of it. We put it into effectively a parking lot for the tack to allocate at any one of the future meetings, and then make a recommendation to the policy committee.
Okay, just, these funds are in FY22. So you would then need to adjust around our, some RSTP money for FY23, if you're going to do it that way.
So I guess like with regards to the scope of the study, like how soon might the tax see that? I guess if the tack has some comments on it, would there be an opportunity to maybe make some changes?
Yes, of course. The, the document runs to 26 pages currently, and it's really just a rough draft. I need to spend some time working on the detail of it, so I can't present it today. Also, the proposal is to have a stakeholders' meeting right at the beginning. Effectively, the, the DRPT funding becomes available on the first of July, and we would look to having the first of August roughly for a stakeholder meeting, so that we can make a full presentation on the study and take inputs from our jurisdictions, from our transit stakeholders as to particular details of what they would like us to study in terms of the detail, proposals they have for remedying, for example, the congestion on a particular corridor. And we'd want to get all of those inputs from our stakeholders, which include all of our jurisdictions, all of our transit providers, et cetera. And we're also going to invite initial public comment or public suggestions on the study as to, you know, things the public might, might think are a problem in the transportation system. So we, all the way along, are going to have, right from the beginning, input from our jurisdictions and from our transit operators as to details of what they would like us to study. I can't present a full scoping report right now, because it's still in draft form.
So this is Paul, I, I wanted to make the comment that I completely get what Ian and Adam are saying about the UPWP. It really would be good if we want basically FAMPO to start this study in FY22 to get some funding in it for FY22, so they could kind of begin that in August. I guess I wanted to hear what Stafford and the city and the other kind of tack members thought of the study.
I guess this is Alex from Stafford. I'll admit, I haven't, you know, seen the study in full detail, and like Ian said, he's still kind of, you know, still developing the scope for that. So I might be hesitant toward full funding to the project, kind of seeing it sight unseen, but I'd be certainly willing to, you know, provide some money for FY22, so they could go ahead and get that on the UPWP and kind of get it started, at least.
And Ian and Adam, just to clarify, like the study would just be in the FAMPO region, right? It wouldn't go into Carolina or King George?
Currently, the scope of this study is for the transit portion. We can only do it in urban areas. So the transit money is not able to be spent from the DRPT grant in Carolina and King George. However, in terms of these particular roadways, obviously they cross the boundaries. Often, roadways don't stop exactly the boundary of our particular jurisdictions. So we, we would be able to look at impacts on our surrounding jurisdictions, but primarily the funding would be to study those major corridors within the FAMPO region, and then connections into King George and Carolina, if they, if they do occur there. We're not going to study kind of the, the Harry Nice Bridge, for example. That's completely outside of our scope.
So this is Paul, I would be supportive of putting some funding for this study, basically in the UPWP. I'd say kind of similar to Alex, I guess I'm wondering maybe about maybe something less than kind of the full 235 amount. But I guess, I'm just going to throw out, like if, if you were to be awarded 125,000 in FY22, and then the balance of the funding maybe comes in FY23, could that work?
I think that could work, because it will cross over into FY23. The, the Phase Two would cross over into FY23, so I, I would be happy with that.
Well, I'll say if there aren't any concerns, I'll make a motion that basically the, the tack approve 125,000 in the hip funding for the FAMPO interregional multimodal east-west mobility study Phase Two for FY22, and proceed in adding that to the UPWP for that funding amount.
All right, we've got a motion, is there a second on the motion?
This is Stephen, second.
All right, any further discussion?
Hey Alex, this is Adam with FAMPO, just a question for Susan Gardner at VDOT. If this motion does pass, would you like us to update the allocation outlay spreadsheet to reflect this, or just handle this essentially offline? Handle it separate from CMAC STBG?
No, go ahead, and you'll need to update through your sheet and to include the H, the HIP money, just like it's on that one project already.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Okay, we'll do that in the.
Can I ask a question? Would there be any, I mean, any issue if we had some previous RSTP? That we could use that, I mean, as long as it gets funded? Would it be an issue with that?
So this is Paul, I, I think that that would be reasonable, if there's older STBG money that could be used instead.
Okay, thank you.
This is just one kind of logistical question, would, would the study need to be rated? And the FAMPO prioritization kind of methodology for STBG, just to kind of satisfy any federal or state requirements for that?
That was the question I was just going to ask, is that for HIP, we're not required to do that? And just from a process point, that might be a question for, for VDOT, even though it's the same eligibility as far as the dollars are concerned. We have not submitted this essentially to ourselves for, for consideration yet.
Mr. Chair, I think it's back to you.
Okay, sorry, I thought we were waiting for clarification from VDOT. All right, so I guess we've got the motion, the second, and we've had our discussion. We'll go ahead and take the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and fund the project with about $125,000.
Thank you very much, Jim, and to everybody else.
All right, in interest of time, I've actually got to run to another meeting here at 11. But does anyone have any other member reports they'd like to add for the group? All right, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn, and we'll plan to meet next on June 7th. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everybody, have a good week.